I saw. We call the planning and zoning commission regular meeting to order. First item is well called. Here. Hey, for the chat.
Here's.
And sneaking in. I get a liar, Michael K.
He didn't want.
And here. And Kevin. So we have our members present. And we have a forum. First item is public hearings. Yeah, continued public hearing. The Triton Square map. CHH twenty threes and those are zero one.
So the hearing was continued at the last meeting in order to get the public works directors comments in writing and in the file and that has been in your packet. And I'll just read it very briefly. Deb, I reviewed the applicant's plan as well as GIS and think confirm that the area at the northwestern corner of fifty five Sealy School Drive does not drain towards the city of Groton reservoirs. Greg Hanover, he is a PD.
Once we open it. I don't know if the applicant has or anybody has anything else to add.
Okay, right, so I did listen to you talking to my, and I wanted to hear from last meeting.
Yes, I mean.
Yeah, we can be avoiding.
Absolutely.
You would absolutely.
Watch every. And just, it's a nitpicky thing. But because this, the exact border of this was nitpicked. We're just moving it a few feet this way, a few that way. I just noticed that where it kind of collides where the proposed border is now shown right on the property line. Truth be known, that ridge line is inboard of the property line a little bit, not in the very corner and not very much. But if we're going to be accurate about it, because we now have very accurate information, thank you. Then it probably should follow the downward points of the one seventy four, one seventy two, one seventy line. Those points are where the ridge line is. I didn't show you that, so.
Do you, I can, we can promote, and we can promote your engineer as well.
That'll let me point.
Just making sure that everybody can hear me.
Can you say your name?
Oh, good.
Yeah, just for the record, once again, Rock Emmend from SLR International Corporation out of ninety nine Realty Drive, Chester, Connecticut, here on behalf of the owner applicant. It came up that the question around the ridge line versus the property line. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Got it.
It looks like at the intersections of the one seventy four, one seventy two and one seventy point. The ridge line is actually a little bit inboard of your property. I understand that there's a swell even farther in from that. And the only reason I bring it up is that when you were grading, I'm also aware that a couple of truckloads of dirt can change this, but in terms of being accurate to what you provided, probably should look like it reflects exactly.
Yeah, and that's totally understood. So if you were to, let's see. And I wonder if I can share my screen. Let's see.
You should be able to.
All windows. Just let me know when you guys can see my screen. So specifically, we'll look at this one, which is the drainage pattern map. And I believe you are discussing this portion here, which is going essentially like this.
Right.
And then comes back in.
I don't think it would change your layout much. It might change and tweak it a little bit, but that would be the accurate line.
Yeah, so this is a minor modification to the line, which I'm amenable to because I, you know, looking at this just based on this commentary, it does appear that it should want to kick over probably the two, three feet away from the property line. It does make a lot of sense that it's, you know, right at the property line because it is just a deviation from the topography, but just based on, you know, the watersheds themselves, it does make sense to kind of straddle that that ridge line.
I don't want to make any, make it look as if we were just modifying it just to make your lot line better.
No, I I want it to be as accurate as possible and make sure that everybody can justify it based upon the actual, you know, physical topography.
You know, Hal, I never thought that was anything other than the top there. Because the way the Vs are, that has to be the top of the mountain.
Point, that's the ridge.
Yeah, exactly. No, I know that. That's why I did think that was inside the line, actually, what that's worth. I think you can hear me. I'm echoing.
Yeah, I can hear you just a little bit. But no, that's a minor modification. So that's something that I would definitely be amenable to.
I've known the comment. Yeah, no, I can see here. It had that, there was a block on it before. I don't see.
Yeah, I can't really see.
No, I mean, there was, it was like a label up there.
Well, really concerned is what.
Right, but we're revising it.
Let's say what's in or out of the.
And with the understanding, as I say, that once they rate this, a couple extra loads of dirt one way or the other, you could actually modify that, but if this is the information we have now, this is.
It should be. But certainly it's the middle versus we're taking that. Yes. Does anyone have any other concerns?
Well, are we modifying it to that? Because that's the question we raised in the last meeting. About why don't we do it the right way? And I think the comment from staff was because they can only control what they.
Oh, correct. And this, and in this case, that's exactly what they're doing. They're modifying the line on their property, not on the adjacent property.
So that, that portion that is currently straight, which actually does not reflect the accurate shed point is not being changed. Just that little dip. Can you go back to the other picture that you had with the?
No. Where is? This, this is. This represents.
This represents the watersheds as they delineate with the the topography. And then this.
I won't be able to speak.
That point is is not being changed.
That is correct.
The.
Correct.
Okay.
It's the area where the line, the dashed line is straight.
Their property.
Right, and it's right, exactly. It will be shifted a couple of feet into their property to reflect the ridge line.
Gotcha.
Yep.
So I guess my question is what, what are we doing? I mean, I understand what we're doing, but I thought that the intention was to get the WRPD out of their property so that they could do some modifications to the parking.
If indeed that's accurate.
They were saying that the accurate depiction was more like what they were showing here. And we're adapting it to be more accurate. They were a little off.
I still don't, yeah.
Well, before, prior, we had it as an entire gray zone.
Yeah, no, I realize.
And that was completely inaccurate. I mean, I guess this, I guess I just don't understand because this is not going to allow, I mean, it doesn't seem, I mean, this is going to keep the WRPD. No, because this entire corner right now, entire northwest corner had the WRPD extending into it, and that's all gone. We're agreeing that that's not true. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And the only thing I disagreed with and what was altering was that it's not the part that lined up right on the property line significantly isn't quite so neat. It's actually a curtain. No, I can see that now, but you know, when we were looking at this map and and that thing was right on it.
Yeah, but where does the intersection that from the WRPD line, where does intersect the property on that thing you're looking?
You want to just put this out there so I can paint and then it'll show.
Because if it isn't within.
It's in their property. Or even on this one. What we're saying is that.
Can you zoom in a little bit?
Yep.
Yep. There you go.
Prior, we have this entire area. Directed. This guy, this actually very bad. And who's sex? Right along the property. It's not quite true. He's eliminated himself. He doesn't have. The ridge line, the ridge line that defines the edge of. It's always defined on the usual. The side, since this way. That's the biggest. It's a body up here. It's not really there. Actually. Actually.
Yeah, which, so the line that you're delineating is essentially the line shown in the other drawing. It's just once we get into the form of doing a zone change, we can only change items within the property.
Yeah, so anything.
So that's why it's.
Correct. I understand, but I don't. The line that you're talking about on that. But how they show it on slide.
Yeah, it's not.
And they're saying it is. But we have base point exactly the same.
Yeah, I'm not sure that without seeing more detail.
Well, that's the detail that we haven't.
I mean, the really, the two foot lines.
No, no, I mean, okay.
Never the detailed man.
Yes, and. You want to see this one? Jeff, can I bring this over?
No, hang on, hang on. The applicant is here and he has. It's the next.
Can you turn that upside down? So this line, this line by points. And right here. So why, as long as that's that. This one is this way. This is this mean curve.
See, I'm not sure that without seeing more details, quite honestly. Because land is not flat.
But this will be a prediction.
Well, it's not, it doesn't say what, I think it's ambiguous. It doesn't say what if it's flat or if it's.
No, that's, so contours dictate what the topography is doing.
No, but I'm saying.
He's accurately showing. I agree with his high points.
But you can have something going on that is not going to be shown in the scale either. And that's why I don't know what that might be.
Well, that's possible.
Right, so that's why.
This is the higher granularity. So this is the better information. And if we're doing something, we always have better information. This is the information.
Well, yeah. No, but to me, that doesn't prove that the line.
Well, that's why.
X amount inside.
That's why I wanted to state that from the pounds.
It's not showing that. It can't show that. It doesn't have. Oh, well, I don't think that's.
One of these things is perfect.
I'm not going, no, I think it's, I think the real world is a lot more.
That's saying that it's just that that. It doesn't say the next one necessarily isn't right hand.
That's how it works.
There's no, I don't.
I don't think it can be.
They don't look at what you're rocking.
Maybe we have to agree that disagree.
But basically on this.
It's not a straight line. No, I don't think that you can say that everything falls straight. Yeah, but yeah, but it can, where does talk from? They're just trying to think that everything is a straight straight angle.
We got an engineer that, the engineer, how much water would go this way, how much water would go into a collection? So he's on spring. Come up and figure out, or maybe because this could be what's happening. The information they have straight lines. Yes, they got.
That's.
I don't think it's given as much information as you say. I think we're embarrassing. So, no, I understand, but I don't think it could be missing. We really don't know what's going on, but it's a good approximation.
And it is what's required by the regulations in order to change the boundary. I mean, as we noted last time, the original boundary was based on ten foot contour information on the USGS. They're presenting two foot contours, which is what's required to change the zone.
Remeasured it.
Right, that's, well, they resurveyed it.
Re-surveyed.
Right, and flights, that's right.
Correct.
Can I ask the engineer a question? Rock, what, given this information that Hal was provided, where would you grow the line now?
Actually, just based on how he's sketched it, following the ridge lines is how I would deviate it. So instead of showing it right on the property line, it'd be, you know, two, three feet off. And that would be on the final map.
Was Mr. Chairman?
Anthony DeJoy from Donmar, the applicant. This map went back through the water company civil engineer and the town civil engineer, and they both agreed that this was the best course of action to put the line where it is. So I think that should probably go on the record.
So it remains, line is the line.
The line's.
Line's line.
Well, it's interpretation of the information. That, oh, it's interpretation.
We shall, we shall go on a hike out there and take a look, take some water.
You don't get to do that. But I'm not saying it doesn't matter. Saying is based it on good data, better data than we've ever had.
We're basing it on information how it's, yeah, and we're interpreting.
Right, and so did everyone else. Right, so the answer is Hal does have a different opinion. We're not saying it can be wrong. What we're saying is we've made, or we hope make our determination based on what it provided, what up till.
Well, that's why I wanted to have a statement by the town's PE to say that what we're doing is allowed and it's correct. Because I don't think we have the ability.
I know that I think we should be blind to the property line when we grow the WRPD.
No, it, it was done.
You don't, but you don't look at a property line and draw it on the property line unless that's where the high point is.
The point is that's what they have control. If we were.
That's, I could see, I don't know, I mean. It doesn't, I mean, even their own engineer said it doesn't belong where he's got it drawn.
If not, I could. Oh, well, it's the interpretation. And we're saying we want to, we have, have the ability. Change, change. For this piece.
What would you base that interpretation on? We base our interpretations on stuff. What would you base it on?
I don't think I have the ability to make the correct interpretation. That's why I want to have a statement. The engineer saying that what we have on changing the boundary of the WRPD system is. Is a line.
Well, it's always.
Otherwise, we can't, otherwise we'd have to say.
Well, right now, I have to say no, it'll pass. But I would have to because I know what that means. I thought I interpreted.
Have an application to change the.
Correct.
And that's all we're going, that's all we're.
I agree.
And that's if we put the dip in here, then we'd have to change it when part of the.
Correct. And which they're saying is harmless, so correct. And I'm saying if we're going to be accurate to the best of our knowledge, which is the information that we got, that's the accurate one. They hadn't showed us that, then I'd say, well, I guess so. It's miraculous that it's only on their lot line, as we say, the lot line should have nothing to do with it. And all they get to change is things within their lot line. And it's, that's a couple of points on.
So if we have a motion either way, we could vote on it, right?
Yeah, well, I was saying to her.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, there's no more information. That's it.
So move a motion forward and either change it for what Hal says or leave it.
No, the motion would be to change the actual boundaries.
Yeah, we would change that regardless. I mean, this map tells us that this area is incorrect. Where we thought it was, where the original line was, is not correct. But where it belongs is not what we're looking at now. Where Hal is growing.
Well, maybe, I don't agree that we need to go one big flat area that if it is a two foot contour and a lot of different things can happen. And we don't, we don't see that kind of.
You're absolutely right, but then we need a more accurate map.
I don't think we need it because.
Oh, I don't think that.
We have the support.
As we have the support.
Yeah.
That the change is.
So I, I'm going to go over and write exhibit A on the map that you have modified. And once you close the hearing and start discussion, if you want to approve as modified on exhibit A, that's one thing. If you want to approve it as submitted, that's another.
So we'll have two two maps that are available for discussion. You have. No, you have that one and the.
Right, you have, you have.
The one that's on.
Exactly. Exactly.
Ones that said the name, this should be.
Or that's what was, that was part of the application. That's as.
Well.
That was what the applicant submitted, so it's either as submitted or it is as attachment. I'm just labeling them different, so when you get to discussion, we know which one you're talking about.
Exhibit A, that's before we, so we don't have an A and B. We have an original. An original, I want to say original and a modified. That's just as long as we have, right?
Right.
That's all I was concerned. Does anyone have anything else? Any reason to hold? Public hearing open anymore? Because we can't put new information in. So we have this. So I'll make a motion and to close the public hearing. Second, in second, in discussion, we'll vote on closing the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Miracles and extensions, motions carried unanimously. And then we can move over to consideration. And we have an app. Application to change the boundary of the WRPD what's shown on the.
As submitted, that's correct. And and I have forwarded you a motion. I think you had some time to review it. It reflects the the application as submitted. So pull that out of the files, so we have both of them out there.
Yeah, but it's just to change the boundary.
Right. So this plan is what was submitted to change the bounds as shown on the property line. This plan is modified by Hal and so the day shows the boundary and of course, it's likely deals with.
Which should be.
Motion as written is for what was submitted.
Is there a concern with a motion? Anyone has concern with a performance motion?
Except for the boundary.
People, wait, wait a minute. You want to. Oh, then yes, the motion is this. Oh, we have the. That's some.
Valid, it says valid motion.
So then we don't care what this information. It's just goes into that. Yeah, the others. That's.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, I, I I, I I mean, seems like the map that was presented the original one is less accurate than the one that Hal has. For that.
Yeah, but we would be approved. We don't approve.
That's the motion you're making is to approve. So we can vote on it.
Yeah, but the other is just information that goes in.
If that's, if we approve this one.
Yeah, no, no, if we approve the motion. That way, that's right.
Correct.
We're just approving that, not those.
Correct, and Dan approves that, I don't believe.
No, well, I, I mean, there are big blocks in there that show us the. They don't.
So your, your options are to approve the, the plan as submitted. Approve, right, approve the plan as modified by exhibit A or to deny the application.
How, how is this considered?
Could you just read the, the motion so it's on the record?
Yep, no, I would, but I don't. I'm not ready to move the motion. I'm not ready to move the motion. I don't have a motion on. And I still. Is all I think we're going. On a motion is to approve.
That's right.
That plan.
As written, that's correct.
The information is our justification. No.
The information there is justification to not. And to as modified.
And you are not either approve that map or not.
Well, either a approve that map. Approve that map as modified.
We take.
Well, we could do that, I guess, but then we'd wanna say. Approved it is. I don't know what you base it on. You just. How do you determine? All that map. Or that picture.
But we we know how that is derived because it's the points on the map that are existing on that map. All I did was. Of where those points were on that map. I didn't create anything. Those two points are all that meant.
Right, but the engineers approved, I mean, all their support letters.
Yeah, that's.
You may don't have the support letters of all the engineers. Whether the chair wanted at the last meeting.
Well.
That will be valid, because it's a different one.
I don't know how they interpret, you can't, I don't think the information on the small map is. You have some other way of.
Yeah, they should have the opportunity to look at it and see.
But I don't think we have. One. Sort of license extension. So I don't know that we care.
As a commission, I don't know if I'm even comfortable approving a map like this that hasn't been.
No, this is.
No, no, that one has. But that one, this one has not.
Yeah, but I.
But now, even the applicant's engineer is telling us that this one is more. So I would like to, you know. I don't know, I'm not comfortable with either of them.
Well, I don't.
I know what the total means. If he's not comfortable with that definition, then I'm thinking this is gonna pass the old way, but I can't. And deny the knowledge of the topographic. And that's what that is, and the fact that a couple of other people didn't seem to think it was an issue. Might be true for them, but. Ignore it now, I hadn't seen it, you look, I'm bothered. I did. And as you say, their engineer agreed. When you put together the proposal, agreed with it.
But I don't know that we have to. Identify it in the motion.
There's nothing up to do. Yeah, you can, just as as you mentioned, because.
Yeah, absolutely, you can, if if that's. What you want to do, you can read the motion, um you know, the map as amended by that. That's my A or exhibit A, excuse me.
Yeah, but that's just a hand drawn.
And that's fine, I mean, this is going to get in um our our G I S um coordinator is gonna put this onto the zoning map and he will use. The 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 topography is shown here and and draw the line as how they.
No, no, he's not. You mean he'll use a topography?
In order, in order to draw the line, that's whichever one you approve, that's right.
Oh, we are proving, yeah, proving that. That's all we're proving is this.
If if that's what your motion is, sure.
Well, that's how it's.
And that's, I believe we would have to have another motion, wouldn't we? If that fails, you you state the motion. To approve it as modified.
Then we modify the boundary. And I I don't think we. Can modify the boundary. Without having redrawn.
I think you're also thinking what the boundary is. All all that it is, is connecting the dots on the topo, that's all the boundary is, it's not anything else, there's no other hydrology study, it connects the dots. Next, those points on. On that the, that topo, the one exception is they took some other forms that don't show up in the area that's not on your property. The way it was drawn, the way that big fat line, I wish it wasn't so big and fat, because that makes it seem uh seem magical. All it did, with a few exceptions off their property. Is that it looked at the topo. Then they picked the points, so it's jutting out points. Drew a line across them. That was it. Well, they missed a couple of points. When they drew that, instead they drew it on the property. Instead of missing doing the jutting out. The entire rest of that. For the entire across the town is based on things that look exactly like that. Forget it, though, most forward leading topographic. That's the high point, that's the ridge point, and then follow. Better information now, two feet. It's not perfect, but it's five times better than it was before. And there were two points that are inside that property. But the previous engineers looked at it, their engineers saw it, and thought, the submitter's engineer looked at it and thought, that's correct. So the fact that some other talent engineer looked at it and missed that because the line was nice and big and fat. It's not my business. Agreed with their engineer that that's where actually it is. It really shouldn't affect.
Provide administrative.
Not if we have a regular.
Well, I understand, I was just an administrator.
As understood by that exhibit, as as understood on that exhibit, which was just me circling the existing points that were that were computer drawn. When we generate.
Well, otherwise, otherwise you'd have to put in some words on.
It's on the record. Exactly what they said, it's already on the rec. I don't need any more words, except for saying, as shown on exhibit. We define, thanks to this. Technology, we just defined. When we create. Uh the map for the W R P D. Someone on, for the town does anything. They don't, they don't cut and paste this map on what they draw it. Or they make it according to what it would say on this.
Correct, whatever, whichever one it is that you're approving.
It's not like it it has to be done by an engineer or something.
No, 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 that's correct.
Either way, they're not using these maps exactly, I mean, they are exact, but they're not copying this map and putting it on. So I I, from what I'm hearing, it it's not an issue for the person who's gonna generate this new map for us with the new line. Draw this one or this one.
Correct, that's correct.
This one, yeah.
Well, if they vote on, if we vote on that, then we do that, if we say, as per amendment, as per.
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A, then you'll be after this one.
Yeah, but I think then we'd have to define.
We did, we showed them.
Yeah, I think so too, I think there's enough. Uh enough in the record. Hal's explanation of why he thinks that line is is correct and then drew it on that map that is now labeled Exhibit A, that's what you want to approve, it's just a matter of. Inserting that into the motion.
Frankly, in about the less time that it took to talk about it, the engineer would have changed his schedule.
Yeah, well, that's different than doing.
So. Maybe you want to make the motion initially as Exhibit A, and then if that fails. Do the. The motion that was drafted.
Which one would you first?
Well, I guess.
I think we're doing two. What that was suggesting is that we do the as amended one first to see if it passed. But it's, whichever one you like to do.
Well, we'd end up. With not following the property line.
Correct.
I don't know what their consent makes to the. There there are parking.
I don't think. I think they do fine.
I mean, it's such a small area, I do not think it will have. That much of it in that, on whatever future plans they may have for this area.
Well, then, maybe we should be focusing things over there.
No, I just, we know, I think it makes sense.
And we're changing. I guess it's up to the applicant that he doesn't like it. It's at his expense since. That's what you're saying, using the standard technique. Are you a perfect? Which may not be exactly what's there.
Information we have.
You don't have. The act, actual information. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment, applications. Z. C H twenty three dash zero 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 one. To modify the boundary of the Water Resource Protection District Overlay Zone. As shown on a map entitled. W R P D Zone Change Map dated May twenty four, twenty twenty three. As amended by. Exhibit A. Pursuant to the following findings and reasons, one. The zoning map revision is consistent with the twenty sixteen. Plan of Conservation and Development, which recommends it, recommends that the requirements of the water. Resource Protection District be periodically reviewed to reflect best available technology and protection measures. Two, the zoning map revision is made in accordance with a comprehensive plan. For the town of Broughton provides for reasonable consideration. Of the environment and Long Island Sound. In accordance with the provisions of C G S eight dash two. This map amendment shall become effective October first, twenty twenty.
Uh fifteen, thank you.
Was changing, the fifteen, October fifteen, twenty twenty three, is there a second?
Second.
Let's move in second, any discussion? Well, vote on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? And extensions, motions carried unanimously.
There's more and more to get this done.
I didn't think it would be that big a deal. I wish we could have fixed the. So I wasn't here two weeks ago.
My slide I'm on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings, we have the September twelfth. Meeting on attain a motion. Will will of the minutes, so.
Second.
Just move in seconded, does anyone have any corrections?
Um paragraph, the second paragraph, over on the right there, I think. Five lines at the bottom, just that he unagrees.
Does anyone have any other questions?
No, wait a minute. Last meeting. You know, I wasn't there. Wasn't showing his absence.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
I had a couple. Minor items on page three. On the third paragraph, um in the talks. About uh Public Works Department, that they are in favor of the map. I think we should not say are in favor. And just say they are in agreement or agree. On page six. On the second paragraph on the top. Likes the commission's suggestion place limits on the hours of operation. It said, it says on the yearly amount, I don't think that's what they should be. You should delete that and place this as floor material. It's hours of operation for processing.
Right.
Not on the yearly month.
Right.
Or some words to. And on the report of staff at the bottom. On the third line. From that sentence, I said staff's state of approval. Plan listed out the sequence, I think it should just say, describe the sequence. Does anyone have anything else? So vote on approval of the minutes as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. And the next item. We have the site plans, S I T twenty three, zero 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 one. But.
You may have public communications.
Oh, I'm sorry. On purpose. Public, public communications. Public communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications? The staff or then?
No.
Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight? Yes, if you stand up to the podium and state your name and address, please, for the record.
Larry Dunn, ninety one Crosswinds Drive, and I'm here as the Chair of the Conservation Commission. And yeah, it will be brief. Alright, uh, I'm here to to recommend uh, some actions. To let's say better manage the plan of conservation and development. Notice my stress. Um, and one of the first actions that's going to occur is town staff is going to release an R F P. To a consulting organization. In terms of, this is what we want you to work on for the twenty twenty six P O C D. I think it, my recommendation is that it's important that there is input and review by. The affected parties, that being mainly. P and Z, you guys. I would also suggest that the conservation and also E D C. I had discussions. With both uh, Robert Morris and with Jeff on that regard. As a result of that, talking to town staff, they agreed that they would have a. Uh, a meeting, proposing a meeting either December fourth or eleventh. Uh, to discuss the content of the R F P, so W P four, it is released. So that's, that's what I'm trying to get. We don't want to wait. And they release it, you get back a report, and then we disagree with it, and it's the whole big distinction. So that, that's suggestion number one. Suggestion number two. Is that subsequently that we look at uh, joint commission meetings. Now talking about the content of it. And in that regard, just as information uh, from a conservation commission point of view. We reviewed what we would like to. See addressed in the uh, twenty twenty six P O C D. And we didn't, not exclusive, but there's six items that were of specific interest to the conservation commission. Uh, one was to, let's say, correct the definition of open space that's in the P O C D. We think it's inaccurate, doesn't match the state definition. The state is currently undergoing a change in its definition, so we're really trying to get everybody aligned. State, the town, and the P O C D. Uh, now, obviously, climate change, resilience, sustainability, you know, key items in this day and age. Actually, a lot of these things weren't in the last P O C D, so I want to kind of point that out. Uh, having outreach and community involvement is part of the process, and I know that's been something that you guys have talked about. Another one which wasn't there before is waste management. Uh, without going into long dialogues. The Connecticut is. Into a fairly significant issue that by the end of this decade, we're going to get rid of the number of plants. We're going to have an excess, excess. We're going to have a problem. What do we do with our waste product? And, you know, we're shipping out, I think it's like forty percent of our waste product to Ohio and Pennsylvania. That may close down at any moment, right? And so what do we do about that? So there's a lot of things we're working on at Westera. And there's, I guess, their forecast and projections are in uh, December. I know the staff and myself, we're. Participating in that, I'm sorry, November, uh, participating in that uh, forecast, et cetera, and we get back to it, but. Regardless to say that there's a long-term issue that we need to address with waste management within the town. And the last one, which was somewhat ignored, we spent a lot of time on acquiring. Uh, land right now. From a town ownership point of view, about sixty percent of the town property. Uh, that is owned is actually open space with our conservation easements. Uh, what we have not done is funded or supported the stewardship, the access. To a whole variety of folks to those uh, properties. So the stress isn't on acquisition. The stress is on uh, stewardship and on access to the entire population. So, you know, this wasn't intended to be that. I just wanted to give some item, you know, some areas that we want to be focused on. And the, the key though is that first step is to make sure that the statement of work. That we agree with it and we don't sit there and then argue about it, you know, when it comes back, and it's not what you guys want, but what we want. Uh, any questions on that? So Jeff, you support it?
You support that you can just address this.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I said it's not. A response to us. We just addressed this.
Okay, alright, so my statement is I am looking for the support of the P and Z to support the actions as I had. Is that fair?
Right.
Okay.
Does anyone else in the public wish to address the commission tonight on an item not on the agenda? Now we can move on to.
I know as soon as I got a snack.
We're waiting for your mouth to be full.
So, good evening. My name is John Casey. I'm a partner with the law firm with Robinson and Paul. I'm here tonight on behalf of uh, VP Development LLC, operating as flash car wash. For a site plan at four seventy one, Route twelve. Uh, the plan is to allow a new single tunnel commercial car wash with vacuum stations. On a newly, relatively newly subordinated parcel. Terms of background, this will be. The applicant's about twenty fifth car wash location, so they have a system that they use. You'll hear about it. When the engineer. Uh, makes his presentation. Uh, and so with me is that engineer, Brian King, across engineering. And then the uh, the applicant, Vincent Corzio from VP Development. Just quickly, uh. This lot, you remember, we did a re-subdivision. Uh, back in February, we recently, we took a parcel that was five point six five acres. And turned it into two. One is has the existing Kia dealership, a little over three acres. And the new parcel, which is about two point four acres. It's zone commercial reason, regional. And it's, this lot is now between the Kia dealership and part of Honda. After that subdivision, we went to the Z B A and we obtained a variance. Uh, from section. Five point one dash thirteen, one, two, which uh, relates to the standards for commercial car washes. That allowed us uh, to have the auto access into the building, be visible from a public way. This lot, you remember, fronts on both Route twelve and Pleasant Valley South. Um, so the Z B A granted that variance. It's been recorded. You should have a copy of that in the packet. Part of the record, uh, so that the entrance will be visible from. South Pleasant Valley, but as you'll see, it'll be uh, fully screened of vegetation and street trees. As I said, this vehicle washing facility is permitted with conditions in the C R zone. I think with that. I will turn it over to Brian.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian King. Um, we had prepared, prepared. Site plan set, which I have here in front of me. And I've been going through the sort of through the plans to give the rebonding. What I would do is I will, um, I'll skip through the, the notes and detail sheets a little quicker. I certainly will those through them. This is a uh, location plan on property. The site is here, Route twelve. It was in the front of the site. Southern Valley is. And site here, he's had the intersection of it to be drive. Um, I think the drive there is. There's C zoning app. Property is for Florida, is same zone. Is in a. Work source. C R. The existing conditions. Plan here, um, in the site. And it shows contrary, you most have one. This is year twelve here. This is the farm dealership to the, for the launch. Leadership south. Well, Pleasant Valley. The land slopes from Pleasant Valley. Forge. It's approximately five percent. That drains down towards. This is a uh. A color rendering. Uh, proposed site, site plan. On with the existing conditions shown on here. The proposed driveway is located at the just link up signal, which is a crossroad. There'll be a full driveway. Entrance and exit. Vehicle to enter the site. And they'll have a choice to turn to the right. After the case patients for a car wash. Or with the two and straight, you know, when you use the vacuum. Systems here. There's three lanes. We have a total of twenty cars like this. Prior to the basement. It's a single path. Where they go through the car wash. And when they exit the site. And message. The site. Maybe a boat. We're proposing. Point that these things. This town is actually a little out there. It makes a change. Product spaces. Which has on the rest of the others here. This is a site plan. It's as more clear. On site, it shows the rain risks. And it shows that that the driveway entrance will be. Not be curved, but we get into the site and on the perimeter, it's going to be a tremendous amount of wide. The interior of the site. Think the posing as mentioned, ten, yeah, these spaces are a little wider than the normal top space. One. When the rest is going to mend flow. Provided to be, for lots of. Vehicles up here and the truck door, it's a pass. Organized on. People using without. Safety reasons. We wanted to make sure that one way to go. These areas here, uh, you have. Back new, you have new houses. It's a central. Back in system here, that's. You have closing the sidewalk. From the way back. Well. Apparently because. The same look out. The barn room. And a smaller decaying line. On the both side, we build the next plan. We are provided. These spaces, uh, we're not being guided spaces. Then here is our. Very, very excellent. Uh, this very detailed, we do have a um, small order management. That we did, and we did. Very consistent conditions. Where we lost those today. And ensure that we have a western army conditions. We did not change the direction of the road. And we want to make sure we provided more quality, providing the produce areas. What about the treatment? Uh, groundwater beachside. We design a system for uh, and this one is one year, two year, five year, ten. So today, a little bit low. Use site with those strong events. We'll be knowing this in long. After construction. We're staying safe from those. It wasn't the strong one, no, this is. We have a number of pet basins. That are shown among the property. Uh, the site would be graded. Paying them that rated. To both those. These are ones that are also they did, a little more drastic than we did. We're actually seeing. This. Base. And that is a. Near line base and then we don't. This is the only. This is the only information basin. And this is the only. This system here is smallest system is those oak chambers. Uh, this is the. Twenty inch high chambers. The one. Model. And adds to the. We have air starts. As rain. So all the we have, which is a. No, we keep, we know. The problem. Interstation system, system the size. Uh, and we're fully stay on the wall. For you, um. We are providing more quality treatment. Like infiltration system, pre-treatment by destruction. Way for us is runoff will flow down there. Some of the world's potential. Again, it will be. What follows flow, the initial flow. Will be directed to this structure here. This is one sample, this is seven hundred. It's large. What, what following run? Structure that's designed in size. For investment here. During the larger place, there's a higher take at seven hundred. Very large voice. Where we work all quality by. This pretty grown system here is asked to. Designed similar to this. The system. Ten years long. Uh, is small. So with this design, the following. Say. Better place. This plan here removes the controls in the city. On the show, we've got great this. But was the sound zone, the water service. But what's the sound zone, the, the water service was. System there. Pleasant Valley. We have a, a new system. On top of the valley, you know, when you put the money, you're going to the world. All that free gas, you know, new patients, maybe it's like. Our, the, the system is really, it's been moved to both sides. We, um, sanitary, but we'll be the building on the north side. And we actually have. Three, three, three systems, going through the nest of. So. And there's one for the process of the water. That there's, that works just. We actually have these three tanks. Like that, including recycle in water, which is. If we have the, yeah, tanks. These here are, these twenty-seven tanks, this is the other one separating. Approximately thirty-four will be recycled, some of them like those, which we, here. Thank you, sort of, these configurations, you know. It's a better way to do it. I guess it's still. Don't know if you use them, I can just. Soon as. This is pretty, this is here. So. This, um, this is just standing, that's the only one, not, not, that's. New process, you also, uh, snowing vision, some. Notes. Shows, you know. The ocean flows, come down here inside, and here, let me send that. Generate the structures, it's fast. Stone path here, uh, just to be sure that setting the traps. If you throw, it is, it's. Contact, it's seen. Basis still. You actually have to be prepared, you also provide. Probably, you can put a time gap with the following. And it's a chart, yes. Okay, yes, follow, and I'm making. What the, the structures and what they must say. You know, there's this. We have, um, pretty few sheets for construction details. For the different items that we're proposing. We have a lighting plan. Um, we're following that. outline. The lighting plan doesn't come out of the box, that's principle. Uh, it's, you got a gommet, you know, going up. This shows the, the, the levels of the stain and. Very detailed, that's. Very detailed. Um. And you're showing. As you can see, they're showing some shateries. Both along Route twelve, along Pleasant Valley. In addition to the shateries, there's oats. Greens, um. Biggest. We're showing everything, staggerable, everything, as we're seeing the banks, as we. The value. I understand, I understand. That's this, we have. And this. So it provides. Trees. The trees outside. That would mean, that's the paper. There's some stuffs and. Ground cover. All of this is. Follow. Fire drops. Ground cover, for the second set. This will only be here, you can go back to your. Or color or anything. Something to see us, maybe, or. You know, there's green all on a different side, between the different spaces, actually, more near here. Like, between this. Space. And the plan saying, also, you know, I'm. Actually, this. Now, I've mentioned. This is one of the main, um, practice hours. Big area in the state. Single land. Yeah, we, um, we don't have the. Building. Right after, then. And apply, so you see the one that they. Are the most. So that, that was my overview, considering here.
We're all kind of, this staff for their presentation, I know. The commission would submit their questions. Most, most.
All right. Um, so just to reiterate a few things, um, uh. So again, and if you remember in February of twenty twenty-three, commission approved the subdivision. Um, subdivision plans were actually recorded in early August, along with a, in lieu of open space payment of a hundred forty thousand. In April of twenty twenty-three, the zoning board of appeals approved the variance, as was discussed, um, to construct the car wash where auto access into the building. Would be visible from a public way, in this case Pleasant Valley, so. Um, the, the car washes are permitted to use with conditions in the CR, commercial regional zone. Uh, the applicant has addressed all of the required conditions. Uh, as mentioned before, the property lies within the water resource protection district. The proposed development meets, meets the WRPD requirements for minimum twenty percent natural area and maximum seventy percent impervious. Uh, this proposed development will be at thirty-six point four percent impervious. Um, there's a stormwater management system that includes catch basin, stormwater basins, proprietary water quality device. And underground drainage to help convey, treat and retain the stormwater. And then again, as was mentioned, wash water will be recycled to the car wash for reuse. Um, a review of the proposed erosion sediment control finds that it meets the requirements of the regulations. Um, the project is across the street from a residential development along Ple- Ple- Pleasant Valley Road South. Um, in, as part of the requirements, a minimum fifteen foot buffer is required for conditional use. On a commercial lot abutting a residential district. The applicant has proposed a continuous screen of arboidae and, and other evergreens. In addition to the required street trees to serve as a buffer. And this option falls in a design standard eight point one dash six stat, uh, dot C, dot one, under the buffer requirements. Um, one of the pieces to point back out, and I think Mr. Casey may talk about this, um, on February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, the. Commission acknowledged that the pre-existing pedestrian walkway. Originally connecting Connecticut Route twelve and Pleasant Valley Road South was no longer visible. Or necessary and not reestablished as part of the subdivision approval. However, this access may be revisited by the commission during subsequent site plans. Um, any elimination of this walkway must be approved by the commission for the site plan. Um. Uh, the staff summary sheet, you hopefully have all seen, addresses a few other particulars about the project. I'm happy to address any of those if you need for further clarification.
We'll have to commission for any questions, comments they have, and so. Generally, I take this thing, this is a, a really tried and true design that's almost identical everywhere else, including the layout, so I don't think I. I would think of tweaking it, but if you've done exactly this, any number of places. Maybe that's just the way it is. So these retention ponds and. Infiltration ponds are only about four feet deep, is that it? That's better, okay. And they're just grass inside because they're just, okay. Riprap on one end, so then, I guess that's fine, I suppose it reads almost like a berm in the front and then comes back down. Um, I did notice, by the way, that the, uh. The car wash tunnel has a noisy end facing twelve, that's, the dryer is a noisy end, so that works out fine, and. The other end is. Almost twelve feet below the street, is that? I was kind of counting up topo lines, it seems to be quite depressed, so it really won't have much impact on Pleasant Valley. Once you have your landscaping there, so I think that works fine. Otherwise, I don't think I have any problem, um. Did it look like you were going to, looking at your lighting plan? Some of your landscaping in front might be dark, but maybe not, because I suppose the ambient light out there is actually from the streetlights, probably will cover it. So I actually have no comment, I think we're good to go on.
Right, uh, I just did dumpsters and trash receptacle, I don't see them on it, but I know that's always your thing, please thank.
Yes, the, um, dumpster enclosure, it doesn't close, um, with the screen fence, is, is right here. Sort of the central part of the site. Where we're trying to come in. And do the, um. Ground area. And I'm like, like you, someone has covered the gym in your car and trying to. One new vacuum. Do something to prevent it.
Vincent Porzio. And each one of the vacuum spots has, has a, a trash can.
Oh, okay, that's all, I just want to make sure there's a place for some. Coffee cups. Pepper. That's it, how are the questions? Looks like you're very thorough. See.
Thanks for the, yeah, packing. There's certainly a lot of car washers in that. Pretty good, the different minimal. But no, I really have any questions, uh, other than. On your Jazzy sign, you have. And what is the police thing? He's curious.
Police is a part of mine, he owns a, a bunch of car dealerships in Rhode Island, Massachusetts.
So that's a family name?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Good, thank you.
Um, yeah, I don't know if you said it, but powers of operation?
Seven.
Seven. And, um, just as far as, the, I'm sure there's new grades of environmentally friendly stuff. Like soaps, detergents and all that stuff. Um, how is that controlled and? And. I know nothing about.
There's, there's big requirements for, uh, as far as.
Is, is there anything that is deemed hazardous that's on site in quantity?
At your own leisure about the.
That we use all, all cyanide chemicals, cyanide is actually made in Connecticut, Paul in Connecticut, and it's on. As far as cleaning chemicals go, they're very, uh, great. That's one of their.
And then the waxes and like, I, I don't know if you use insolvents or anything for. Undercarriage spray or wheel spray.
No, no solvents, but.
No solvents at all? Okay, so nothing flammable, nothing hazardous?
No.
Okay. Um, and just. Rough, uh, water magnitude, not how much water. You go for a day? Just said.
So when, when we're, um, we recycle, at least a third of our water, you know, we can adjust it up or down. Um, anything high pressure, we recycle. So I would say. On the high side, we'd probably use forty to fifty gallons per cup. And then we recycle that, we reuse thirty. So it all depends on the volume.
Yeah. So. So I had.
Again, I'm in the wrong business also, with all the car washers in town. I think some of those others must be brandished, they don't have the same precision. As far as the retention ponds, that was my first thought.
Yeah.
And so on, your stormwater, you followed a house of seventy-two hundred, what does that do, does that take the south side? Um, retention water and move it to the north side? And is that seventy-two hundred unit, which is right at your entrance, right here? What does it do, does it pull it through the south side and move it to the north side?
No, actually, the, the word goes through it, and it's, it's, it's a swirl finger, really, yeah, it's seven, it's, it's always, so. The nice. The red floor. This is, uh, seventy.
And does exit above grade, so like you're looking?
It was like, yeah. So. It's literally able to cover, if you see it's on the rear.
Um, and the only other thing. Um, so that, can I just go through with staff that lot? What distinction was on that lot, because I've always seen it there, and I always presumed it was kids cutting from Pleasant Valley. The, the youth center there, right, that's, what are we using for?
That we, yeah, we think that it was used for, um, from Navy housing to go to the school, back at that point. And then, as you know, the school is no longer, you know, functioning, you know, so, um, in the. I actually went down there when, when first the subdivision was there to see if I could actually find the path.
Sure.
And I couldn't get twenty feet in there, so it had been, hadn't been used in a long time.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that as an access point. And then, whenever I look at Google Maps, which I did today, you have all those, are they the Kia cars that were in front of your property? Which look like they're right on Route twelve, is that, you, you made this subdivision, they used to always store cars right there, are those cars all gone? I mean, is that your land?
It's, the, the transaction isn't complete, sorry, in case you care record, but it, it will be probably at the end of this week. Um, assuming everything goes well here tonight, um, but yeah, the, I, that lot hasn't been used by the dealer, that part. For a number of years, is my understanding, and I know, I know the aerials that you speak of.
They didn't look good, so as long as there's no storage, it doesn't look like that this.
Yeah, there was a time when this was cleared, I think they were doing work at the Kia. And they, they, they pushed a lot of their cars and stuff on this, and they use this as, um. Like swing space or even, uh. Uh, stockpile, like, uh. Soil stockpile during construction. So, and so it was, in, in, in one aerial, it looks like it was completely clear.
Ninety-nine, yeah.
Yeah, and then it, it revegetated.
There's no car open.
Yeah. And if you were to start this project, when would you start it, and what, how long would it take for?
So this fall.
And how long? Like one year?
Less than a year?
Thank you. That's all.
I don't have any questions, does anyone have anything else? Let me just ask, this, what's the throughput of the tunnel?
How many cars?
How many cars per, how much time?
That's a good.
So we probably.
Can you come up to the microphone, sorry, just to report?
Again, it, it depends on, um, demand, but you can, you could put a hundred cars an hour to the.
Okay.
It's unlikely, but.
Oh, it's, it's wildly unlikely, I was surprised to see you have three lanes coming in and that, and that much stacking. Knowing that you have competition. A couple hundred years.
Maybe not.
Yeah, have a couple hundred yards away and then, uh, on the other side of the highway, so it's.
There was a question about the three lanes, but that all goes to, and that's the point I wanted to make about why there's, you know, twenty-five of these, and. It, it just. It makes sure there's no choke point when you're coming through, because each of those are a pay station.
Yeah.
And, and if you say one of them goes down. Then you only have two, and if someone's having trouble operating it. And we, we had this discussion with staff, and, and Ben was very clear that. Three is one wins, so we, we actually narrowed.
Yeah.
Took out a lot of the, the edges of the pavement at the request of staff, and some of the other, uh. Comments by the other departments, so we shrunk. The amount of pervious surface.
Yeah.
But, but we felt, uh, based on experience, that having three pay lanes. Was necessary. I, I like that, right, because that way you're not backed out into Route twelve or something.
Well, they, 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 they have so much stacking. Right. We know what the throughput of, of, even that one. Which is what pops car wash, whatever it is now. So it was never one of the four cars.
Through per hour, twenty-two stacked up.
Immediately getting to a kiosk, I don't think that's probably what the.
I actually drove by two of these today, at the Meriden, and I will say, I noticed, they were both busy on a Tuesday. Mid-morning, lunchtime, so. Yeah. And you get free vacuum.
That's, that's a big.
No, there, there was then, also on that point too, is that, so there were, there was actually more stacking where that front, once you come in the main entrance, you turn. Um, but. You know, one of our comments was, is, is you need that much there in the front, so they actually, actually increased the, um, that green space there. And then, and then basically, you know, mentioned that fact that they really need the three, the three pay stations there, but they did reduce that first, that first big hook to the right, that to the left.
Yeah, it does look like it's made for a crowd, and. You look nice business, I just can't imagine the crowds lining up there, e- except for. You look nice business. I just can't imagine the crowds lining up there except for grand opening. Come cash in our hoop one day.
I don't know. DC they're lined up like that. They're lined up.
But it's not DC. This is the sailors coming back, you know, so it's. Yeah, that's true. That's true.
You need to set up a Dunkin' Wells.
And just with regard to the path, I just wanted to get on the records that I agree the path isn't there anymore. I think it might show up again if what I did hear was that EB was interested in the Pleasant Valley site for a training place. Would be nice if buses could get up and stop at Route twelve and because these are guys training means they don't have a job now. And so they're going to be taking the bus. I think they're probably going to cross over not on your property. Because Honda Honda is there and so it just don't don't go that way. It's a long way to a crosswalk elsewhere. So I think it's probably. It's an issue that'll take care of itself, honestly.
And just for the record, that. Pathway was never based on a lease manner or any.
No.
Formal property, right? It was just a. Of an agreement. There was a license agreement from the early sixties that just.
I didn't even owe the license. I just thought it was MWR sending its people that way.
Anyone have any? We have a prepared motion. Does anyone have any concerns over that? It's the applicant.
We've seen that.
Yes. Have any concerns?
No, no concerns.
So I'll make a motion then to approve. The site plan application S I T twenty three dash zero 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 one flash car wash for seventy one Route twelve with the following conditions. One, the. The design engineer shall certify the stormwater management system has been installed. For the approved plan prior to the issuance. Other certificate of site plan compliance. Two, the commission acknowledges that the pre-existing pedestrian walkway. Originally connecting. Connecticut Route twelve. And Pleasant Valley Road South is no longer visible or necessary. And will not be reestablished as part of the site plan. Three. Technical items raised by staff shall be addressed. Findings, the commission finds that they pose. Buffer and landscape plannings. On the west side of the property meeting intent. As section eight. Point one point six of the zoning regulations and all under design contract. Or under design standard. Eight point one dash six. When C point one. Is there a second? Smooth and secondary. We'll see. Anyone have any special on the motion? No vote on. On the motion for uh. Flash car wash. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then pause. And extensions. Motion is carried unanimously.
Like we say, thank you for your investment. Nice job, right? Yeah, thank you. It's not on the record, but I think they maybe I heard biggest open space payment.
Really?
Dubious maybe distinction, but.
The next item is a. Coastal site plan CSP twenty three zero 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 two. Was at coastal site plan thirty five to thirty seven Water Street. Apple. Like to make the presentation.
Um, the site had a longstanding history. Of um of work. The primary purpose of the. Overall project is to create. Existing burning capacity. Features of this. Restore structural integrity of the seawall. Um, this is the one place in this. And to raise. This building. We've had a whole time this site for thirty two years on with various improvements. Um, mostly for the building facilities. And one time.
At one time, um, uh, this building was um. Uh, being considered for our home office for Goffon Incorporated in nineteen eighty eight. And um. However, we found other accommodations. And it was really being better used as a carpentry shop. Due to this boatwork. Uh structural work to calls. All heads and. Interior compartments and wooden boats. So it had a lot of uh neat history. There was also um an engine shop. At the north end, uh diesel shop um operated by. Family members. This was all part of the McGubbins. Um, uh property and. And then they operated for quite a while until they were sold. The um. The application that we prepared um has. Been based on. Uh, the existing boat burning facilities, which I know I'm not really to the primary interest, but um. At any rate, that highlighted uh the existing dock system. The various views and so on that. Are not beneficial to uh boat burning. So. Uh part of the application uh in the approval process with the D P was to straighten out those views. In addition, uh the new owner, Mr. Lazard, is interested in starting the water taxi. Which will actually be based in Stonington uh over on Edgemont Street, which is. Uh right adjacent to the sewer treatment plant on the north edge of Quinmore Arena. And um and he would like to have a stop uh here as well because this is right in uh downtown. And um the combination of the Edgemont Street and this facility. Worked out very well for people who are coming to this to on M track. Uh because the Edgemont facility is only four or five hundred feet from the track uh from the station. Um. So there were a lot of um. Um issues that we were trying to resolve here. And um uh the waterfront needs of the site. Uh dock real line, a lot of occasions to see wall structural integrity, the building. Um which is um editing down. Uh is like. It built on a stone foundation and um. The uh I think the undercraning and so on is is particularly close to. Uh typical high tide coastal storm elevations and frequently the wood members uh get wet. And so raising building a foot. Was determined to be eligible as part of the D E's permitting process because. As you can see. The timeline, the main highlight goes under the building. Not because of natural features, but because of the fill that was placed there I think years ago and um. Uh it's a loss of fine grain soils through the opening. Uh joints of the stone. And so as that soil eroded, the rest of the stone foundation settled. The building has been propped up several times, but it's time for the rain system to be installed. That part of this project. Um, the site is um. Has got room for a fair amount of parking on the spaces. Uh the existing site parking had to be reconfigured in order to get that many spaces. The site is also uh covered by a public access. He's been in favor of the pound. And a designated public access area, which we'll see better on the next on the next sheet. It is not a big site. It is entirely occupied by um the buildings, the activities and the parking space. And um. So. One of um. The correct the prerequisites that we tried to. Meet in the development of the site are one, that this building is story. And so when it's gone through, it reviewed by the Historic District Commission. And it's gotten a certificate of appropriateness for uh being retained and being raised. Um, the uses, um the largest um use of the site in terms of the area of occupancy is the parking. And we've made the best use of that that we can. Um, there is a little inefficiency uh right around the entrance. Um in the vicinity of this concrete dead man, which used to be part of the ferry system. A hundred and thirty years ago and uh has been has been left in place. The survey is based on A two T two standards performed by Jim Bernardo and is accurate. The um uh there will be as a part of the project. Page two here in a second. This is um. Uh we've got a detail on sheet two. That shows the um. How the building will be jacked up. In order to put in the new uh concrete foundation, which will support the building. And then the building, of course, will be uh put back down on the foundation. In the same location uh as currently exists. Um, as a part of that project, just before, we're going to be installing steel sheet pilot around. The perimeter of the site. Uh to allow the uh foundations to be constrained and to uh cut off. Um, uh further. Erosive forces and wear and tear on the the foundation elements. Uh we do have some details on sheet two which show how the foundation will be based on the existing stonework. And why the protection of that stonework with the steel sheet piling is necessary. The um. When the uh when the building is being jacked and shown with the jet uh pylons here on the north side. It's going to necessitate public access be closed. During the duration of construction. It is planned that this project will start in November. Um, we do have D P approval. Um with your approval, we would be able to pursue. Um, uh getting the bids finalized so that this work can commence um probably in November. As part of the zoning regulations, uh there is a requirement for landscaping and so we have taken advantage of each of the geometric. Um. Um eccentricities of the site. Mostly at the north end, but also in the public access or a depreciated trade. That um would uh be suitable for the area. In deference to maintaining visibility over the river, which is one of the primary uh vocal, I mean, visible attractions in the city in the town. Is um. Um, they're we're using dog. They're salt tolerant. They don't create a large um footprint. They're kind of light comparing, so. Uh they don't necessarily obstruct the the visual. Uh the aesthetics of the river. And we've supplemented those with some um. Uh tidal wetlands type grasses. They're not tidal wetlands. They're just um pushy, uh large, pushy grasses, three deep high and so on. And um and they will be around the perimeter. And in various areas around the rest of the site, just to give a little. Uh softening uh to the site. In addition, a request was made to put some planters. Um adjacent to the north building, which is a little on the plain side and um and these will be enhancements visually. Also, uh bike rack was requested. And so that was bike rack uh shown here. In the midst of the bushy grasses and out of the parking way for vehicles. And um we have maintained an open and unclimbrigged sidewalk. Because of the property line um eccentricities of this of the site. Um, part of the sidewalk is on town property and part of the sidewalk is on. Uh private property. And so not only will there be. Construction needs to allow the building grazing work uh to be done on town property uh as a temporary measure. But also easements um will be given to the town so that. Um, uh the sidewalks operating on private property will also be covered um. Uh appropriately. The voting access. Will be um. Uh modify it slightly in this project over the current conditions because. The um we had originally intended that there would be a uh a granite curb cap placed on seawall. However, the D P would not approve the cap. And um so. Uh in order to at least present a visual. Um impediment um to uh vehicles operating on the uh grounds at night. Uh we've got this one fence and. In addition, uh the lighting is going to be minimal and building mounted and will um conform to the dark sky principle. Um downcast lighting with um uh limited areas of influence so that it will not be. Uh, you know, deemed excessive. Or um. Blacking out on the right word for distraction or. The hardship on public. Um, we have erosion and sediment controls that are primarily shown on sheet one. And they're around the perimeter of the site. The actual area of disturbance during seawall work will be within ten fifteen feet or so of the seawall. And um so. We have an emergency settlement control right around the ice to prevent. Brick and sand. From the gravel park block uh from getting into. Uh the river. The because of the uh presto nature of the parking area. Um our drainage is based on on total filtration and uh it's seen the site during heavy rains and everything about that works. The water goes stays on site. And it goes to the ground. Fortunately, when. It leaks out through tidal activity and such um seawall side. That's what creates some. Yeah, lots of material in seawall. We're going to take care of that. The detail that we have shows that there is a filter fabric that is playing a place all around. The uh the kind the stone so that uh it will screen the fines, keep them constrained on site while the water round. Um, we have worked closely with the Prescott and Jones on the uh details of the site and their assistance is greatly appreciated. Um, the information uh that we were taking using. The easement references and instructions, the reinstatement of. Uh, uh public access among the project partner calculations. The bike rack areas of the limited area of improvement. Um. The landscaping. Lighting, trash and stuff that goes. And uh. The whole kayak rack. Down in this area of all them um instrumental in. The final review of private using high press. The cell. Those are taken up. But we are probably about two weeks, three weeks. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on this.
Have the staff make their presentation.
Back again. Um. Alright. Excellent. Um, so again, just to kind of follow up on a few things. So the site is located within the coastal area management zone. Uh which is requiring the cam removal, have not removal review. Uh the southern bill building will be raised by a foot and the stone foundation wall will be rebuilt in anticipation of rising sea levels and more frequent coastal flooding. In addition to the other site improvements that were mentioned, the southern building will continue to house small businesses, including the addition of a proposed water taxi office and ice cream shop. The site is located within FEMA's coastal AE zone. Um, the regulations require that a structure come into compliance if substantial improvements are proposed. Substantial improvements or repairs, alterations um and others that to a structure that equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure. This term, however, does not include alterations to a historic structure, provided the alteration will not preclude the structure's continued historic structure designation. The southern building, as as shown on the site plan there, is classified as a historic structure by the by the Department of Interior's National Register of Historic Places that was done back in nineteen seventy nine. Um, the applicant is using the town's flood protection definition of historic structure to exempt the alterations from these requirements. In addition, as mentioned, the applicant has received a certificate of appropriateness from the town's historic district commission for the project. Work on the south side of the building, as you can see on the site plan there, the corner of that building is is basically right next to. The town's property where the town boat launch and and dock is. So in order to raise that structure, the the structure, it would be within the town's property boundaries. So so that will require a construction easement, which was mentioned before. As was also mentioned, there is existing public access on the site that was required as part of the approval of previous site plans. They are shown as public access A, area A and and sorry, not A, area one and two. As part of the proposed project to elevate the building, there will be a need for the temporary closure of the access. Because it'll be, it's obviously the curbing would be right in the way of that access. The project is planned to start in November and be completed prior to the start of summer. But the existing public access will be preserved as part of this project. As mentioned too, as well, there is a water taxi pose business. They're proposing to run a water taxi service that will be docked at this location. However, passengers would be picked up on the Stonington side of the river. The parking that's been proposed for this area is for the water taxi employees. And five swats are proposed for the water taxi, which is is to including two for the employees. Review of the proposed erosion sediment control, find it meets the requirements that it will protect the coastal resource from disturbance. And there are no known or foreseeable as adverse impacts to the existing coastal resources. Again, you've probably seen the summary sheet. There's more information about some of the history and some other things. If you have any questions on that. I do have a draft motion, Mr. Chairman. I know we've worked on some on some changes, so I've actually rewritten it here, but there was one other change that. That I discovered too, so I'll give you a copy of this prior to that. Okay, so.
Right, welcome up to commission for. Don't think I have any. Don't think I have any comments except for the landscaping plan. It's my confirm if you're using them. I think smaller trees, but they're not really ornamental, so they don't get decent size. But it takes a long time to happen. But they're not real good. Street tree material. You're not really adding any street trees on the streets that I know are.
And that was one of the struggles. As we were looking at the requirements, there there really wasn't room for that with existing sidewalk. And and so kind of what came up with it with on the plan here is to use a dogwoods in spaces that obviously. The root system wouldn't cause structural integrity issues with the wall or whatnot and the, you know, but still provide some of that street.
That building was the first commercial building I was moving with. Because the guy was developing my house tandem, rented space in there. And I thought, what what am I moving into? Building is falling into the river and here we are. Okay, more power to you.
There used to be a rigor down.
I'm sorry.
What there wasn't there, somebody having reading.
The thing that always stuck out in my mind is. The operator was using almost all hand tools. The same sort of equipment. That you would see at the seaport. You know, spinning a bolt and into an old sail. Is is not an easy task. It was very interesting to to watch him and. And to to see what he was doing, but. It was also one of the reasons we didn't move into the upstairs because every once in a while, there's a lot of noise and frequently it was dusting. And so it would be a mess for for us in our operation.
Handicap accessibility parking for the dock and for the person is there like can and and the public. Oh, never mind.
Okay, I'm sorry. We do have A D eight, an A D eight parking space out here. And it's included in the count of twenty spaces. And I'll tell you, we could not get one more space.
Is there an end date for the public access? Or is it just we're hoping for the beginning of summer?
We're we're pushing for the work is going to start in November. And we're giving it six months. So we're anticipating that the building raise will will all be accomplished in the first couple of months. And then the rest of the year is going to be spent on. We're going to try and get some of this work done, but the building raising is going to so occupy the site that we really. Can't have anybody else in there while that's going on, so we want that to be first.
And I should say to you, when you, if you've seen the 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 draft motion, we actually put language in there that. That ideally, and we've talked a lot about this, that ideally, we want it open for the summertime because that's when it's going to be the most heavily used. So we have a cutoff date of May fifteenth, twenty twenty four, barring no issues. And if not, they would come back and ask for an extension, exciting the issues that come up with that, so.
Thank you, so.
I know it's a lot of work waiting to build. I was just curious why you're only going. It's easy to sit there and say, why don't you go to sleep, but I was just curious what the reasons were.
We wanted to go to sleep. We did. The D P. Said that if we wanted to go two feet, we'd have to go through a full structures and dredging permit application. And we have twenty seven structures and dredging permits. On my conference room table. And the average age is two years. So we've told the D P we're not interested in pursuing anything under instructions and dredging permit. So we tailored this to the permit available.
That was all right. And I oh, one more thing, Mr.
That was the American dogwood. It's salt tolerant. And that was my, yeah, that was my.
I hadn't heard of that, so.
Yeah, that was my biggest concern because this area, you know, there's saltwater infiltration through that gravel. And not so much with these guys, but those three along the shore. And and like I said, the. The dogwood is a light area tree. We've got five over the yard and, you know, they're not, they're not. So domineering and they don't require that much space and maintenance, so.
That's good. They have a salt tolerant. It's a special salt tolerant, you know, species.
You know, the American dogwood is definitely salt tolerant.
You also, are you planting those rows of Sharon or is that exist?
Yep, no, we're gonna put a rows of Sharon up there.
And that looks like it's in the flood.
I'm sorry.
I said, are those in the flood line?
Uh, yeah, the they are, the the salt, saltwater could be a foot deep over this site. In in a twenty five year, fifty year storm. And but the the thing is that where I work across the river. At the north ends of the engine shop, engine room, building, the brick building on the other east side. We have rows of Sharon growing adjacent to the buildings. And the saltwater level is two feet below the pavement. In that area and they're they're doing really well, so. You know, it's a nice looking, nice looking plant. The dogwood is growing in the spring and the rose of Sharon in the summer, and so it would look nice.
Um, question on parking, um, you providing twenty parking spaces?
Yes.
Give me thirteen. I think I read that you got twenty. I always see that place blocked off at night and you mentioned something about access at night. Is is there a plan to leave it open? Because as you know, you know, mystic and park.
The I can't speak for the owner, but in the. I was adamant in having these curb stops. And I really, I really wanted that one foot cap stone that a car could not easily get over. You know, and the D P's insistence on not granting that would is just. You know, I I don't know what they're. Thank you. But with the curb stop, I mean, over the, you know, the the parking block. And two, they would almost certainly get hung up on the stone wall.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not.
So.
You know, I'd like to see more parking tonight. I mean, this, it's a, it's an issue.
Yeah.
You know, as long as it's, you know, adequately lit, it's not, you know, pitch pitch dark. And, you know, places and chained off, which I think I see mostly.
Well, it's chained off now because the site is not occupied. We lost the engine shop when the. When the McGugan family moved off. And so now there there is literally no one on the site. So, you know, the and the owner doesn't live there, so you know, he can't control it.
Right. But the plan you're saying is to leave it accessible at night?
The site is is, as I understand it, is going to be left open. All right, will not be chained off. As it is now. Right now it's changed off because it's not occupied.
Because a portion of this is town, right? Just the, just around. All right, so there's no town parking. All right, that's all I.
Sure. So part of this camp, what I would call the old rigging shop, the maintenance shop. Was there any, have we addressed that at all or have they not asked for this?
The only thing that that we know of.
But most likely, and I know I'm just saying on the cam, you're you're not changing that building. And so it's down there today. You do have a little public access sign. And in front of the north side of the south side building, is that going to be a sidewalk there? I couldn't tell by your presentation. So with right at the public access, is it going to be looked at like a sidewalk? Because right now it's just walk into the part that which is fine.
It's going to, in all likelihood, remain a stone dust pad.
And my only last question is to the staff. So that town of Groton launch, I call it launch. There's a ton of Groton name thing there?
Yes.
Any others downtown this?
It so so I I actually did talk to Greg today about that. It's considered how it was, it's considered a canoe and kayak launch. Is what he said, so. I know, I know. I did mention it too. I that I that our discussion last time with him too, so.
I didn't have any questions. You have to change.
Yes, I have right here.
So the boat launch that's in between Fort Rachel. Between their docks, as you're facing this river and the main part of the marina, is that Groton? It's not, that's a private assumption.
Okay, so. Sorry, if anyone has anything else, I'll make a motion. Well, it took the motion to approve the coastal site plan application CSP twenty twenty three zero 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 two. Was our coastal plan thirty five thirty seven, or a street with the following conditions. One, enclosure of the public access area. Areas beyond May fifteenth, twenty twenty four will require. Review and approval of the Office of Planning and Development Services. And if appropriate, the commission. Two, existing public access shall be preserved and properly identified in coastal access sign. Three, assigned temporary construction easement and permanent sidewalk easement will be required. To recently was part of the accrue site plan prior to. Who are reporting the site. Four, the kayak racks on the south side of the building that encroach over the town property shall be removed. Five, any modification to this plan imposed by another federal, state or local agency. Shall require additional review by the town staff. For commission, whichever is appropriate. Six, technical items is raised by staff. Till the address findings. This structure is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The Historic District Commission approved this certificate of appropriateness for this project, including changes. The elevation of the structure. The term quote substantial improvement and the quote is defined in the zoning regulations does not apply. To this historic structure. The commission hereby finds that the application is modified is consistent. With all applicable goals and policies of CGS twenty two A dash ninety two. And incorporates all reasonable measures which would mitigate adverse impacts of the proposed activity. On coastal resources along the shoreline as well as future water dependent activities. Is there a second? Move in second. So do you have any discussion, any motion? Vote on the motion for CSP twenty three zero 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 two. All those in favor say aye. Any oppose? Any extensions? Motion is carried unanimously.
I wrote it down too, but yes, absolutely.
Can hold us back. Okay, our next item is. Oh, you wanna take a few, Greg? I was gonna take one before we got into the bad news. Yeah, no, we should take a five minute break. I usually should have a special meeting. Ready to go to battle stations. Okay, the next item is we have a. New business, new applications, non-referral. Yeah, it looks like.
Yeah, um, um, yeah, that that's true, although I also have a very long list of ones that I expect to come in in the next month or two.
They're keeping them under. Okay, so we have a referral from town of Stonington for zoning texts.
Yeah, this is a text amendment for their agricultural heritage zone, I guess, just to clarify what the definition of a contiguous property is. Um, it looks like, so that it make it clear if you own property on one side of a road and the other side that that's. Considered contiguous for the purpose in this regulation.
Farms.
But yeah, well, um, their agricultural heritage zone allows a lot of different types of activities on plots.
No, but you're have to have that happen.
Right, well, for sure, yeah, for sure.
Does anyone have any concerns? That sort of have no. That item. And next uh, item is short term rentals. And we found. In our package. Comments from. From the attorney. And. Some comments from our ex.
Right, that Diane was sent to you today and also attached with the agenda online.
Which I like, I guess we can go over it, must be on a whole of special meetings.
It it's it's up to you, I mean, there's no, you know, the. I mean, some folks think it's high sensitive, but I mean.
I would like to get.
Yeah.
Get it through. I I don't know what. Makes sense for any special meeting.
Or, I mean, at this point, I'm not sure. The next meeting may only need regulation. And discussions.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I don't believe we're gonna have any, any site plans or subdivision.
Well, what I was bothered by getting these things all at the last minute.
Oh.
Especially Diane's.
Well, they came in, you know, came in this morning. I know, no, if you wanna take time to consider it, I think, I think the October meeting, the next October meeting will be fairly light. Um, we will probably, I think, that's really important. Um, I think we will have some draft landscape regulations to review as well. Landscape, right, yes. Abitha has been working on that, yes. Yes, there is.
Can we just turn down those speakers? That's what's called. That the microphone's here.
Definitely, it's not the game.
I, yeah, there's too many buttons.
He'll press one and the whole place will blow up. I just, I don't know, I don't mind.
Is it just these two pages?
Well, we have Diane's stuff. Which is quite a few pages. I think two pages, and then we have in small type. Uh, print.
Oh, that's the attorney's done?
Attorney's.
That's your packet. Track changes document.
It was track change.
Oh, that's that.
I really think.
I have a copy of the first page, oh, you gotta.
I guess one thing I don't really, it's a bigger question like this. I don't understand all the downsides. Downsides of implementing, say some short term. They buy the hand and don't even pass it to anything. And the town council hasn't done an ordinance, what's that really gonna mean? Um, I don't know what. Yes, and if it really is a problem. And then I guess question number two, I'm given that the elections are coming and everything else. What kind of timeframe estimate? Uh, if ever, I mean, that's gonna be a problem, you know, the town council could decide.
It will go to the next, it will go to the next town council.
Right, but then they could decide basically not to.
That's the ordinance.
I think we should do go through and make the changes in the drawing. At least news.
I guess I, I guess I know I would like to understand what's that really gonna mean, is there any? Is there any backdoor check then? I know a lot of things, gas stations and stuff. Well. Oh, a lot of times we have things that, you know, were done before, there are any regulations or something like that. Not so much you could do it, but I don't know if the fact there aren't, if they still ask people to register.
Not, not through the zoning regulations, um, registration would be through, through an ordinance.
I mean, okay, so then could the town council do an ordinance later and say, look, all of you have to.
Yeah, for sure.
So we could go ahead with the regulations and they could come along in the room.
It seems like it'd be nice to have a very important day.
Well, we'll think that, but I have no faith that's been, yeah, being able to. It's not realistic.
What our plan was to put. The regulation change out and then have the fancy base the ordinance on what we're gonna.
When we pass this, or or if we were to like pass something. Wouldn't it make? Like, like if they're not allowed in the residential zone. Then they're not allowed in residential zone and if some, and if there's a. Then someone would have to come in and show me. Why they would be allowed and that would be that they have receipts or that they've been doing business. Wouldn't it just like make every one of them illegal until they come in?
No.
Well, how do you know then which ones are doing it and not?
No, I mean, it it would only be, um, I mean, if if the use exists at the time, um, these regulations become effective. Then then they are allowed to continue as non-conforming use.
But but they don't have to come.
They don't have to register, I I mean, what I would see happening is neighbors, somebody complaining. Um, and and so the zoning official would then, you know, make the inquiry, okay. When, when did you start your business and document that, you know, what are you true, are you pre-existing?
Yeah, no, that's what I mind, yeah.
But it's, but it's not going to be, oh, all of a sudden everyone's gonna come in with their receipts and. Because the zoning regulation as you suggested can't require the registration. Um, that, you know, that's, it's better for ordinance. But right, obviously, it's better for ordinance period rather than zoning regulation.
An ordinance, but here we are, they they could come later.
And they come illegal.
They they could, and there's nothing to the argument to say, look, this was never allowed in our zoning regulations. So you're illegal when they want, that doesn't play anybody's role to me yet.
I would think you might be able to record and say, because if it's not a free, a recognized use. You can't have it, but I don't know that the town would want to.
And and. The argument is, look at the definition of dwelling unit, and you know, it's like dwelling units where somebody lives.
That's not true, because the definition only describes physically what a dwelling unit is.
But it also says whether leased or rented.
It's, no, it.
Yeah.
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 No, because it's only defining the physical attributes of a structure.
The town attorney thinks that that, that's problematic, I mean, to to have that. That um, interpretation.
Oh, the, what, that's all it says. I mean, it's the definition, the the thing that you'd be arguing on is the. The statement in the existing zoning regulations, saying if it's not recognized, you know, our regulations, you can't do it.
And there's been some recent case law that that.
I don't know that.
And with regard to short term rental.
I think it would be a shaky thing.
Absolutely.
And I don't think the town would wanna give it.
Right.
Isn't a dwelling unit, though, a dwelling? Which by definition has to be residential.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, right above dwelling unit in their list of definitions is dwelling and then dwelling unit, which is. Part of a, what a dwelling is, says that it must be residential.
So. Sorry, but. We're not here to talk about how it's been interpreted.
No, 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 I know, and we've been through this.
But get us anywhere, if you wanna do um, regulations, that's really what we need them. You know, I know there's a lot of different people who have different ideas of how it should be interpreted, but.
I think I agree with that, and the point is, we can say, but as we finish these regulations publicly say, we believe this was covered before. And there are areas that uh, whatever, that we believe that short term rentals should not have taken place, we can say that. And adopt the new regulations, but the fact of compliance, what I call compliance, is all about ordinance, it's just that simple. But it doesn't, it shouldn't prevent us from doing good zoning regulations, creating great, continuing. Right, going forward.
People are still converting residential properties into short term.
As of right now.
Because somebody told me last Wednesday. That they are being kicked out of their existing. Residents that they were renting, because the owner of the property. Wants to sell it to somebody who turned it into a short term. So it's still going.
For sure.
So I think it makes sense to have a zoning regulation.
Right, in the absence of an ordinance.
Something or else, and then you can lose that as basis. As the starting point.
Exactly. Or or stopping point.
Well, okay.
Yeah.
But it would at least prevent. It the whole town of this or village of Mystic being a short term.
Well, I think so, I appreciate you answering those other things.
Sure, it's one of the key.
Yeah, sure.
That's what our bathroom is. And you gotta have something in writing. That's accepted before you can go to the council for an ordinance.
Not exactly, the council can do the ordinance themselves, it could have.
They already tried.
Okay, I understand that. One doesn't preclude the other, they chose not to do that.
No, because they don't have the insider knowledge.
Oh, but it was a choice.
You'll start the night or start.
I'd like to. In startup.
I mean, some of these comments seem like just minor tweaks of words. So the blue is that, is that Diane's?
Right, so the track changes are the town attorney's comments.
Okay.
Okay, the one that we received this morning that are blue and red, those are Diane's comments.
The blue, blue is, blue is her interpretation, I think is red is.
Yeah, blue is, I think, of her comments, and then I think she's suggesting changes in the language.
Oh, you wanna start?
And I know you just received those Diane's this morning, so.
Well, we can, we we can go all the attorneys and see what people think. You're gonna start with maybe equipment and property. The first one is he's talking about the regulations currently defined dwelling unit as follows, room or group. We held. I don't understand what they.
Well, I think the first several, the first couple of paragraphs of these comments are are basically explaining that. You know, we're gonna have non-conformities that exist.
Well, we know.
With the, I know, I know, I know. And then the the last one, um.
The last one was changing the time thirty days.
Yeah, I think we based that.
And it was based on a state statute.
Yep, and it's thirty days from last.
Sorry, and he didn't understand less, so the only. I I think we should leave it like thirty days. Month to month leases are legal. Well, it doesn't, that's. It doesn't make it illegal, it just means it would be a short term now.
But you don't want to make it.
Month to month is more than one month. You can't evict somebody. If you're in a short-term rental and that person stays over the time you call the police. If you are in a long-term rental and that you want to evict that person, you call your lawyer.
All right, what he was saying is we said thirty days, we didn't say.
We're not talking about months, we're talking about dates. No, and also though.
Recognize that most months, it were also thirty-day months.
April, June, September, and November, but also.
But I think we should be in inconsistently with state, state regulation. And they keep, don't they have to have these things on file or they know who's paying the taxes? So it, so it would be very useful for the town to know who's a short-term rental question by using the state data. So we want, I would say you want to leave it.
Is everybody comfortable in that language?
Thirty days or less?
As it's written.
As it's written.
Yeah, foreign alignment to state.
Because Diane is suggesting, which I thought was okay too, but if if this one in here aligns with the state, which now I, I think it number. And that makes sense.
True that I saw with the way Diane wrote it was that, I mean, she tried to put this month in, but it doesn't say whether that is less or more, so it's like. A month and then you're talking about thirty-one days or twenty-eight. Thirty days sometimes. It's like a year, right? Three hundred and sixty-five or three hundred and sixty-four, you're renting it for a year.
But this doesn't stop you from renting it. For a long term. It really just says.
Leave that as is.
Then I guess this next one was down in. Five one seven C two. And it's number of short-term rentals per lot, no more than one short-term rental, maybe allowed per lot.
Right, and and he makes a good point. I mean, how does that work with an apartment complex or condo?
I I think we could do that by just adding things like in in the R, in RU districts.
But isn't an apartment complex by definition? A rental already?
Could be a condo, I mean.
Yeah, but it's short. It's not short-term, that's.
And 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 I think his point is that it's on one lot. This says only one short-term rental per lot, so if you have, you know, a hundred units. Only one person gets to do it.
Yeah, well, I think you can. That would be in our RN district, or you could just specify except for apartments.
Yeah.
Multi-family.
I mean, that's sort of a policy question for you, for you all, you know.
Yeah, it's just, I think it should, yeah, for multi-unit facilities, you should be, it shouldn't apply, but you have to be careful.
Just so to say you have just five apartments.
I thought you could do that by specifying for in RN RU districts, in RM. If it's on a lot, but I'm not sure how to write for it, where you. Cause in an RM, you can have single-family residences, which would apply. But you're also allowed to have multifamily in the RM, so you want to just say those lots are. Usually the single-family residents. I think you could do that.
Except, I'm about to say the exceptions, except for.
That's what I thought.
Multi-family, now you might want to say multi-family more than two families.
Yeah.
No, I, because then you have, you know, you might have a house in neighborhood that just happens to be turned into two apartments. Well, that's okay. But you don't want, those two apartments now become party central.
Yeah, no, you don't want them to, yeah, those should be, have to be classified as a us residence or a single.
What's the limit?
Is it two apartments, is it three apartments?
I mean, it's a couple of downtown Mystic that are five.
But it would, if you go to. If you just said that. Duplexes and above.
That's right. Are we okay with duplexes in above? You can only have one?
Not a lot. You can have more than.
Duplexes above, you can have more than one. Well, I'm okay with that, because that means you're duplex.
You want to have duplex, I mean, duplexes meet the one.
I mean, if you look right down, there is a section about duplexes. So it would.
The duplexes still, still would be under the regulation. So what, if, but what if there's three apartments, where there's four apartments? What's the number?
But I I mean, maybe do a percent.
Yeah, but we have some control, we're saying it has to be a residence. So those places you could only run it out if you were there on a part-time basis, I mean. Less than a full-time basis.
We're gonna be consistent.
It it's comes, I think it's in three, where it's where your owner occupied. In an owner, cause I, you got to allow. People that are saying a condo complex of fifteen condos. Each person should be able to rent their place out.
Yeah, I I think, you know, I think it's self-correcting when there's a lot of apartment.
Yeah.
Because then the management from the condo.
They make the rules.
Don't make the rules. They say, okay, it's okay, do whatever you want. It was, you know, lose people who don't want that, same with any rental apartment, it'll be the same kind of thing. There's plenty of apartments that say, by the way, apartments A through to G are short-term rental as well. That's okay with me, or I don't want to rent here. But what happens with all these apartments that we're trying to build for electric boat? Then they become all short-term. Well, that's what.
Yeah, yeah, because it's single.
One is what, two thousand dollar a month apartments?
Yeah, so you say, if you're in an, if you're in a.
Used to happen in New York City, New York City.
Wouldn't it be self, be all right to say that if you're in an R, RU or RM district? You can have to be treated as one. You can have one residential, you can be short-term rental, one for probably. I think you might want to make the exception. You know, multi-ten.
One per lot, isn't that? In those zones.
Except, except um in the RM district, you gotta allow it. Or that would only apply if you only have a single family.
Right.
Yeah, just say, can't we just say this does not apply to multi-unit?
I mean, we don't even know, we don't have a registration. Like if you go into a multifamily and there's.
You're collecting the state tax.
Who's gonna do that? Someone is complaining.
I don't think on a, on a condo, they, there's some police. It's only apartment.
It's on small.
Small apartments.
That's on, I'm thinking, may- maybe in fact it is on. Above that, four places. Yeah, which is a standard.
Just pick a small number, yeah.
Those four, four places are pretty common.
Something down by on High Street, there's a five down there, that we're, starts to go down toward Rachel. And then further up on High Street by the historic building, there's a four there. So.
Four addresses?
In one house.
Yeah, and there's a five further down.
And actually, maybe that's still okay, because as I say, you you have five units, and what we're saying here is you want them to be short-term.
I, yeah, I'm a little concerned that we're talking about more different unit counts than what a definition is.
Just, just call a multi-family or multi-family.
Right, we just three and above.
Yeah. Just call them.
And so for three and above, we're gonna say you have to live there.
No, I think. That's uh.
No, three, three and above, you're saying you don't have. What are we saying about three and above?
No, just saying no more than one.
One per lot in one.
In the R and RU.
In the RU, in RU, it's only in the RM district.
Right, in the RM district, if you happen to have a single unit structure or a duplex structure. Then there's again, only one per lot. But if it's an actual multi-unit development. In the multi-unit, yeah, if it's a multi-unit development, then.
You can have more than one per lot. That's all of a sudden. This is only how many.
So in that case, oh, since, but you'd still be. Which is what New York. Okay.
In most districts.
We're not treating, we're not creating it for the past.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Is there any problem with not including the other districts, like, or losing something?
Well, they're not residential.
Right, residential, industrial.
But we, they don't care.
We don't care, yeah.
Commercial.
I think it's only the.
Right, and there's, right, I mean, if you look at the very, you know, conditions apply in the commercial zones, I mean, in the IM zone. Um, it's just you need special permits and.
Yeah, it's only this, it's only the unit per lot. That's.
Still apply in those other zones. The special permit that picks them for the residential units.
Yeah, they're the only ones that have the description. And then we go to, I guess the next attorney one is, you know, is uh street parking.
Oh, what's that?
You know, what is a short-term rental room? I I would imagine that's a bedroom.
We just dropped that word.
Yeah.
Sure, that too, yeah.
Short-term rentals.
Yep.
Maybe located in principal.
He doesn't like principal building, it's not defined, um, so in the dwelling unit.
Yep.
Which is defined.
Which one?
Then up to, no, oh, up to one accessory.
Located in no one zone, so we, that can be.
Not to exceed one?
Yeah, that can be reworded, yep. Think Diane had suggestions as well. Which one, five?
Noise and.
I mean, I think, I think the answer to his question is yes.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, that's all the time.
Okay, now street parking.
Bedroom, isn't this how we do parking for multi-things?
It is.
So it's consistent with everything else that's so. I mean, the number of spots. You've got, I mean, if you've got a three-bedroom, you have so many spots and two-bedroom, there's so many, that's what we do with it.
But but he makes to the point, I mean, if you just, you know, if you have a family of four who arrive in one, in one car.
That's not.
You know, and they're renting two, two bedrooms.
No, I I get it, but you could have the same situation in an apartment building.
No, but we're, he's looking at it backwards. It's not the person coming in with one car for fifty people. It's the fifty people coming in with fifty cars, that's, this is, that's what this is. He's looking at it backwards. It's not that we have two unused parking places.
Yeah, no, you've got to have the parking for the maximum.
Not the worst case, but a yes, bad.
Yeah.
And that's what this does. Now we got noise. And I think he's, he's got an interesting point, I don't know.
I, I mean, I think, I think this can be reworded.
I think you can read that.
Yeah, exactly.
Make it.
Demonstrate that, yeah.
Maybe you don't demonstrate it, you just say it shall be provided.
Through these types of things that, you know, through buffering topography or other means, that short-term rental should not be a nuisance to avoiding residential neighbors.
It's demonstrated term to use.
Diane said, um, she said maybe clarify and then quote presented during the application process.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what I think.
I, I, yeah.
It's just the word, yeah.
Yeah.
Demonstrates maybe, usually demonstrate means you're, you're physically doing some activity.
Use that language in the zoning.
Oh, do you?
Have true people say it during their presentation.
Oh, that's fine. Oh, that's what you mean. Is if it's used elsewhere.
When someone is grandfathered in. I don't know what, that's the chance, but you know what I mean? And they're allowed to continue this operation, is the noise and nuisance applied to them or not?
Does, none of this section.
So they could go and be as loud as they.
And and we'll, we'll call the police and.
Well, just normal residential stuff that kicks in. If your neighbor is noisy, call the cops.
Yeah.
Well, then, okay, so then that would also then uh prompt the zoning official to.
Absolutely.
Want to show me.
Show me that you're pre-existing.
Pre-existing.
Does the town council in their ordinance to be defined have the authority to require existing. Um, short-term rentals to periodically renew?
They could do that, sure.
So in other words, to catch up eventually, to to make these non-conformances. They passed ordinance, there's no more grandfather.
Right, yeah, that's right. I mean, that's the cleanest.
Well, you could say within the next three years, everybody has to, you know, show that they comply with the existing regulations, something like that. And New York did not take that.
And they just said, no. And then Jenny had his thing on temporary events. I don't, I don't under, I think he didn't read this.
I mean, I think he's thinking that, okay, it's gotta be owner occupied, so what if it's the owner who wants to do the temporary?
This doesn't apply to them. I think it's.
I mean, I just, I wrote the use of a short-term rental for temporary events is not allowed.
Yeah, and I was.
I mean, I don't know what.
Temporary events hosted by, you know, someone who's leasing the.
Yeah.
It's a short term.
It's direct the way it's.
Well, that's what Diane said.
Yeah, she said. Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I, I think we can reword it and still keep the same, the owner can certainly do a temporary event.
Well, it, it only applies to the short. Well, it's the way it's written, it all, it says that. Temporary events is part of a short-term rental.
As part of a short-term.
That's good.
So are not allowed.
Was that say, was that to say that a wedding party can't come in?
Right.
Yes.
Right, and have the wedding outside.
But it doesn't, it's not, if the owner has it.
Just change a few words, I think, I think it's that as part of, and then just make it.
Posted by the lessee.
Something like that, yeah. Things like, just to make it clear.
Oh, yeah, you can.
Yeah, I think so. I think we can clarify that.
So that's good. So then we're all done.
Save the special meeting.
Well, but have we looked at Diane's comments in addition to what we just went?
We did. Yeah, we had a lot.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, take, just got them this morning, so certainly take your time and look at what Diane is suggesting and look at it again, so what we've been talking about here. And and maybe we'll talk about that at the next meeting, so.
Well, can you put?
Give it a shot.
And then we can have that.
Right.
And then we can have that, that, and well, that Diane's.
Although she may have one.
Can I just?
Oh, that's okay.
No, I, it's better to go around a couple of times and getting all the problems out.
Yep.
But you see, it's better to see her in writing.
No, I agree.
See if there's something in this.
Over ten. Mr. Jim, can I just revisit that temporary events thing? So, congratulations to me, my daughter is engaged. So, um, so her girlfriends are going and they're renting an Airbnb. And it's gonna be six and I'm, and they're gonna have a bachelorette party or something. And they're not gonna do it in Mystic, but they're, you know, going someplace, but I'm just thinking if somebody comes to Mystic. And wants to do that, we are preventing that?
And, and this, if you meet the, uh, that temporary.
They can certainly stay in the short-term rental, but a temporary event.
Yeah, do we, do we define temporary?
That's, uh, like, you know.
Temporary festival or other such group or aggregation of rides, shows, games, exhibits, demonstrations or concessions or any combination thereof. Also, special events such as weddings, large parties and other such gatherings where the property is rented out for a fee. And not held within or on grounds of a private residence and the residence.
I think you're talking about. And they're not.
Can't do that.
Yeah, they're not, there's not a bed for them at night.
They can sit on a bat porch and drink.
You know, there's, there's no bed.
Like, um, American ship.
Yeah, all right, you can go down a little, point, see some, hear something.
Yeah.
No, yeah, and then those six friends can all have a room at the end.
No, they have these, yeah, they get amplified music. And then we compare it all up.
And that's the difference.
That's, that's the difference.
Well, that's all the attorney had, um. That's not a lot of meat.
So we're pretty close. So we can have something on our next.
I will give it a try.
So is our intent to try to finish this up over ten?
If we can, well, that's just finish getting it to public.
Yeah.
And then.
Our, our confusion, get it to public.
And we have a pass series.
At that point, do we show it to town council to say?
Absolutely. No, but still.
We can give it.
I think we should.
We, we did it at this time, yeah. This is what we're putting out.
And we, yeah, we intend to hold a, a hearing, I don't know, beginning of the year or something.
Cause they're gonna be on, I got. Yeah, that's right. No, but it can't get votes on that short-term.
We can't, well, I get rid of those.
Okay. All right, so we're done with short-term rentals. I thought it might drag on. Uh, reported chair. How do we make out on, uh, our problem with you?
Oh, yeah, I, I've been out there probably every other day. Yeah, the wall is under construction right now and the slope is certainly holding.
And it didn't fall apart. And we had a lot.
We did.
I didn't think it would. So that's.
It's, it's under control and is still being inspected, several times have been really.
Are they gonna have to change the plan for construction?
No, I don't think so, no, they're, the walls are going in as shown.
As shown.
They started plowing.
Um, they're actually block walls.
Oh.
Yeah.
You'll see the, when are we gonna be able to just sit down and figure out how we're gonna handle that?
Yeah.
I don't wanna wait till December.
No, I know, um.
Starting blocks.
Exactly, exactly, um, and so in talking to John, like, you know, probably the end of October, if it's not the busy. Agenda, and if not, we'll be in November. Just to kind of have to sit down with you all and see what, what.
Just to get a high level.
Exactly.
That's all.
Yeah, exactly. And in the meantime, um, as a department, we are, we are starting our community engagement project. Um, to identify groups, um, that we are going to want to, you know, sort of pull into the process as opposed to. Sitting here and, you know, just having the usuals come in and as a deal with, with planet conservation and development, um. So I think we will be doing a lot of public outreach as part of this, um, and, and. We should have a plan together as to how to do it, the workouts, we're kicking it off this Friday.
How do you get a public?
Well, I mean, to identify the groups, you know, like, the groups of, you know, maybe renters or, or smaller neighborhood groups, um. Church groups, to really try to get out.
If there's general feeling on the public, like when we had these, um, for our last POC. Opens are just the public. And they did have some input that I was surprised to hear from some of the public, not. People on commissions or anything, or in politics, where they were saying we ought to start reusing. Existing buildings that are dormant, rather than building new, which I thought is a very good thing.
And I think we'll get better participation if we actually know how to groups as opposed to advise.
To start, yeah.
Right, right, to start, that's right.
Well, we've got to be careful, I don't know how you're gonna check.
Um, you know, there's a number of methods, um, yeah. Yeah, go to them is, is the first, yeah.
But it's hard sometimes, or people just aren't thinking.
More effort, I think, on the, on the staff and consultants part, you know, because really, frankly, it's easier to just post a meeting and say, you know, come in on. Right, yeah, it's, yeah.
Or just, or go on, on the internet and just say, go. Make, make some inputs, and that doesn't mean you're getting.
Exactly.
Just certain.
Right, that's right.
It's like listening to Gretchen.
Best person for it.
That's where you don't wanna turn your hearing into, so. Okay, uh, reported commission, there's any commission.
I completed some training.
The four hours?
Four-hour training, is that?
They have the whole day train, you just can't make the date.
When?
Yeah.
Four hours?
One hour has to be on.
Yeah.
I mean, so the things we've been sending to you, you know, those require.
Oh, but Diane said something else for four-hour session.
Oh, definitely, yeah, I know, that, and that would mean everything.
Including.
That's in person, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but is that worth what going?
I think we've already taken it online, I mean, I don't think so.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
So what, what else is?
No, I, um, I mean, there's been a number, yeah, e- every time we get notice of it, we send it out to you guys, most of them are virtual. Um, I know a number of you have already completed.
There's a couple on site, like Norwich is on site.
Right.
Whatever.
Got a report to the council at the end of the year.
And we do four per year.
Four hours for this year, and then it's over the next two-year period.
Okay.
Oh.
Yeah, it's you guys in the ZB.
Yeah, but, but we have four hours.
Yeah, if you've done one of those virtual sessions, then, yeah. So just remember to report it.
There was, you gave a sheet with all, everyone's.
You're done, you did it early, yeah.
There was a sheet there.
Yep.
Um, on another issue, uh, not, I mean, but, um. Uh, Stonethan Institute on High Rock Road. That, it, there's a, I don't know if there was ever supposed to be a crosswalk there, but. There are groups of people sometimes that cross thirty at a time, and I'll, I'll stop for them, but they're really, I don't know if that's something that we can.
There's, there's something, yeah, let me look at the.
It's really terrible, I mean, for the people trying to cross the street, it's like they go in groups.
Yeah.
I just noticed that. Well, you, you'd have to, I mean, you know, it's like waves of people and then another one, and when they go, there's.
Yeah, but it, yeah, but there was definitely something in the group.
There should, I mean, there should, if there wasn't, there should be.
Should be, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and they, they walk, they go down the sidewalk, cross, and there's another one over the, you know, I think intersection, but the one right in front of the.
That's come up, oh, oh.
It's a badly marked intersection.
It's a horrible, it's a terrible intersection, yeah. I believe that's something.
It was just for.
Yeah, fair enough, I met the, uh, one of the operators.
Oh, sorry. In that part, I think it's a traffic thing, or he's. Wide open.
It's wide open.
Too wide open.
That's.
Right-hand turn should be dedicated, one issue.
Yeah, people go too fast.
Not me.
No, because it's.
It's so.
Dangerous.
It is.
Anyway, thank you.
Anybody else? Record of staff?
Nope. I hope we're gonna be working on one of these regulations.
Two updates, anything going on with Central Hall, is there, is it still? Glacier pace?
Um, no, yeah, they're, they're certainly on the market.
Or are they?
And I expect a request for the COs for the, for one of them. So no, they're, they're moving along.
Glacier pace that they've been using. And then, um, presented, it seems like that's.
They're not done yet either.
I heard a lot of this background. None of it's.
Also, what happened with that house on Ace House?